I'll call the North Smithfield School Committee meeting of August 5th, 2020 to order. Clark, please call a roll.
Chair Lombardi?
President.
Mrs. Shearres?
Here.
Mr. Connell?
Here.
Mrs. Johannes?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mrs. Mayo?
Here.
Mrs. Bada?
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Thank you for all of the school committee members and I assume the parents and teachers who are on the Zoom call or the Zoom meeting. Thank you for attending. We will try to get you as much information as possible tonight, understanding that we don't have all the answers yet, we don't have all of the guidance. But we will communicate out to you to the best of our ability. And let's move on to the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just a topic that is not on the agenda, but just for informational purposes. The Interscholastic League did come out today about fall sports, stating that there would be a delay against fall sports generally starts August 17th. It would be moved at least at this time to September 14th, pending the outcome of many things, I'm sure. Superintendent, the consent agenda. Does anybody have any thing on the consent agenda they want to take off? Seeing no objections, I will entertain a motion to pass the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Reports, Superintendent. North Smithfield reopening plan. I know it was revised. If you want to explain what's going on right now, what our current information is, that would be very helpful. We would appreciate it.
Absolutely. One of the things that I would refer everybody to now and certainly going forward is over on the district website, I have created about two months ago, a school reopening tab, which takes everybody to a clearinghouse of information that we, as it develops. I'm just going to point out that we are posting news and information regarding reopening, including a copy of the update letter that I sent to families a couple of days ago. Along with, under this section Superintendent's Update, I do maintain a blog and I have been posting all of the communications out to the community, actually for quite a few years now. And certainly as we've been moving into distance learning and then the questions with school reopening, I am doing as much as I can to be transparent and notify the community with as much information as we have at that time because truly this is an incredibly anxious period for our parents who are trying to make plans, for our teachers that are looking forward to coming back and have some concerns, and our students who don't necessarily want to repeat a full year of distance learning as they did last year. They want to have the school experience again. They want to be with their classmates and with their teachers. So the information I've been updating on that page as well. So under school reopening area here, I just want to highlight that RIDE is periodically posting a frequently asked questions and they update it. So I do have a link to the RIDE FAQ, which includes, the latest one that came out Monday has updated guidance for wearing masks and how schools are going to move forward with a number of different situations. Also, what we have posted here is the plan that we have submitted to the Department of Ed. Now, I've been sending out to the school committee and the community and the teachers a summary of the plan, but the entire plan is here with all the assurances and the breakdowns in a number of different categories. And unfortunately, I wish I could say that these plans are finalized and they're good to go, but everything that we're doing at this point is unfortunately a snapshot in time. And I truly understand that people want solid answers. They want to make plans for their kids. They want to know what day schools are open, but we don't know. So what we have done is submitted three different plans according to definitions by the Department of Education, a full reopening, a partial reopening, and a limited reopening. Where we land on that spectrum, I honestly do not know. The state last week posted a series of five metrics and benchmarks that they will use to make the decision on which model we reopen with. However, it's still unclear where the state stands in this, where the town stands in it. And to be quite honest, there are a lot of moving parts that right now we're trying to juggle with the limited information we have. So our number one goal is we want to reopen. We want our students back. We want the teachers in the classroom, but we also want to do it safely and securely. And that is a very much a moving target, week by week, on what is considered safe and secure. So, for example, I mean, guidance has changed on wearing masks. Guidance have changed on, you know, three feet versus six feet of social distancing. We still don't know what the limits we will have on the buses as far as transporting students. We don't know essentially the model that we'll be reopening. And one of the things that we were very happy to be able to offer, and I watched the governor's address today along with the commissioner, and they were very happy to notify the families that they, that all the districts were giving families choice. I mean, if they choose to continue to distance learning, we will accommodate. If they choose to send their students in, we will accommodate. However, this creates quite the balancing act. Now, I did put out a survey for families to give us an indication of whether they would choose to continue with distance learning. Right now, and I'm going to check the survey, we have 157 students, families that have indicated that 157 students, they would like to continue distance learning, to start the year at least. Now, of that 157, about 16% are medical, have medical needs. And so families have indicated that there's pre-existing medical conditions. So our nurses will be reaching out to these families. However, the rest are choosing for a distance learning model as opposed to an in-person model. Now, we definitely, we want to give all of our parents the choice in which they feel comfortable with. There have been, I've received so far a couple of dozen emails after I posted this. And the number one question is, how can we make a decision on distance learning if we don't know what model we're opening with? And that is truly a legitimate concern and question. I know if we're opening under a five-day-a-week model, that will be different. You know, that may choose, that may create a different choice than a hybrid model where we're two days, in two days a week. So what I've been trying to assure parents that this is non-binding. Once we get the indication from the governor's office what opening will look like, then we can lock in, then we can make decisions, then we can make solid plans. Until that point, we do need some sort of approximation of maybe how many students will be looking at a distance learning solution versus in-person. The challenge with that is when it comes to allocating staff and meet everybody's needs, we basically need these counts to know that, how are we going to address all of these needs? Now, we do have a team of teachers from all different grade levels and different content areas and specialties that are continuously working on the curriculum for 2021, specifically what distance learning will look like. Unfortunately, I don't have any exact models. I can't tell you exactly what it's going to look like because we're still gathering numbers. Now, we do have to balance the kids who are home for medical reasons. We have to balance the kids who choose to be home. We have to balance students who may be in and out of school due to varying levels of quarantine. If they are quarantined or a member of their family has COVID and they have to quarantine as a result, how to continue education for everybody regardless of the circumstance? We also have a number of our teachers that are in high-risk categories. So we're looking at ways to accommodate our teachers. We're looking at ways that they can feel safe to come into work, even if they or their family members are in a high-risk situation. Plus, we're looking at ways that we can accommodate teachers who may have to quarantine, may have to be out because of medical issues, how we can continue instruction when we may not have enough staff to cover certain classes. We're trying to juggle how we're going to handle teacher coverage and substitute coverage. So essentially, there are a lot of moving parts. There are, at this point, very few solid answers. But one thing I can try to assure is that we have an amazing group of teachers and administrators being very creative, looking at many, many different options. And we will do everything within our power and capability to meet the needs of all students and support all of our families. So now, I can address any maybe specific questions that the school committee has. But all I can do is assure, we're going to put in every piece that we can. We're being as creative as we can. And as we get more information and make changes based on things we hear from the Department of Ed, the Department of Health, the CDC, the Department of Education, we will continuously update and notify everyone.
Have a question?
Yes, please.
Superintendent, this is a very specific question and it's, you may not know the exact answer, that's fine, but I just want to ask. If we did have, only because Massachusetts came out today and, or I guess Friday, they're going to have this quarantine thing if you're in Massachusetts or from Massachusetts. We do have the condominiums over like through which any kids, I don't know if we have any students from there right now, but people could move in there. If they're coming from the condominiums and they have to pass through Blackstone to get here, which if you're in the condos you do, I mean, we won't have any, are we pretty sure we won't have any problems with that, right? Or are we not sure about that?
No, I think it's, there are some different criteria when you're commuting or passing across the Massachusetts border. So in a situation like that, we're okay. And I did look it up, oh, I don't know, a few weeks back. We really don't have many students who live over at the condominiums over by Blackstone.
No, I realize we're talking a small number, but I just kind of wanted to be proactive in case the issue arose. I mean, people could move in there, you know, it could happen and we don't, the laws are pretty, they're kind of draconian. But I did hear something about education being an exception. And I wasn't clear if they meant like daily education or kids going to school like in colleges and mess or what they meant. I think they would, I would think they're talking about going, just passing through, it wouldn't be a problem. I just want to make sure that's just something to think about.
I don't see passing through as a problem. I also know that the governor's office is really trying to push priority testing for K-12 students, staff, and their families. And unfortunately, they're looking at a 24 to 48-hour turnaround. I wish it could be faster, but you know, that certainly is much quicker than the week or two delay that's evident in some other states.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, Superintendent, thank you. Thank you for all the time you're putting in on this and the administrators. And thank you for communicating this out. You're doing an excellent job in this area in an unknown world right now. So thank you.
I just wish I could give more solid answers and solidify the ground under people's feet at this moment.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is for informational purposes only. It's under the direction of the superintendent. Item number four. Anybody have any questions on that?
I would just like to highlight a few folks on this list. First of all, I truly wish our best to Joe Kaparko, our technology network administrator. He has moved on and I have to say, when I came to North Smithfield and was able to hire him, I was so pleased because he was a bona fide systems engineer, which honestly, a district the size of North Smithfield, no offense, it just happens to be the size of our district. We should not have been able to afford or snag a full-time systems engineer. And he has made an amazing difference with our technology and everything we've been able to accomplish in North Smithfield. I mean, just a fantastic tech team. But I also want to welcome Joshua Almeida. My concern when Joe left is that we could never possibly replace him with anybody as close to a similar skill set. Well, guess what? We have somebody with a similar skill set. We scored a major coup. I did receive a phone call from a superintendent in a much larger district who was not able to hire him, but knew that he was interviewing in North Smithfield and just recommended him so highly, which honestly was too late because we had already interviewed him. We had already been so impressed and had already offered him the job. So, you know, I just truly want to welcome Josh onboard. I also want to say, welcome back to Sarah Glover. She left us, an amazing, amazing teacher at Halliwell. She left us last year. She had an adventure elsewhere and she has come back and we could not be any more thrilled to welcome Sarah. I think I saw her name on the list on the screen here. So if she's still here, Sarah, we're so happy to have you back. Lindsay, our new science chemistry teacher at the high school. I want to say, we stole her from another district and I'm not apologizing to the other district for having Lindsay and they don't, so too bad. Good for North Smithfield. As always, we're going to recruit and attract the very best. I have not met Jamie Kraus yet, who's our third, new third-grade teacher, but unanimous with the interview committee. I mean, and I think we had for elementary, I think last we checked, there was about 180 applicants for just a handful of elementary positions. So, you know, I'm glad you're with us, Jamie. And then Elise is our new music teacher at the middle school. And again, she just knocked the socks off the interview committee. And I fully expect that North Smithfield music program will continue to excel with Elise onboard. So very happy to welcome these folks.
Thank you, Superintendent. That's because we have the best teachers in the state, right?
That's right.
Okay, any other questions? I'll move on to new business. The MOA on NSTA, the retirement changes for 2021. This is something, we did something similar a number of years ago and saved some money. And the superintendent and I looked at it again and wanted to bring it to the committee, an option to move forward to give some additional benefits to anyone who's looking to retire. That we want them to be pushed out the door, but we do if they're on, maybe, you know, they're ready to go and we can offer a few dollars more. It would be beneficial, you know, financially for the district. I did ask Lisa to provide some savings and there are a different number of options in here. But if you look through the document, option one, there's a $37,000 in the first year savings. Those savings continue, but they don't save at the same rate. In option two, it's $32,000. And that's the net amount. So there's potential savings here. Superintendent, I don't know if you negotiated it, so if you want to speak more about it?
So we did discuss this with Amy Wright and the union executive board went through the document. We, unfortunately, I do have a text in to Amy. I don't know if she's on board. The executive committee was meeting today regarding the two MOAs. We did have a couple of lines to add by recommendation of Ben Scungio. And however, it didn't change any of the numbers or the real language. There were just a few points of clarification in it.
But Superintendent, this is the retirement one?
Yes, Ben also gave us a couple of lines to add to that. And that updated document has been, had been inserted into your packets today. And I apologize for the late notice of it, but it really is just a couple of points of clarification. It doesn't change any of the real language or the terms on this. This is also something that was difficult to do. And as Chair Lombardi said, it's not to try to push anybody out the door. But you know, the reality is, is that we have an unusual year. We also have a number of teachers of a certain age who may also have medical complications. And for some of our staff, it's a very frightening year to return to the classroom. And so we also have a financial situation in that we still do not know what the state aid to education will be. We do not know if it will be matched from, as a level fund for as of last year. We don't know if it will be reduced 5%, 20%. We honestly don't know. So this is one of the things that we're looking at. One, to possibly help maybe some of our older teachers, you know, who are with us because they love teaching, but there's also a real inherent concern about continuing work when they are close to or eligible to retire. So we're looking at an incentive for them for, to help make their decision as well as ultimately save the district substantial amount of money because we honestly do not know what our budget will be. So it, we feel that it's very fair. Our attorney looked over it and like I said, he inserted a couple of lines as recommendations that the union executive board has been, has reviewed. We're all pretty much on board with this. And it's so, it's more of a decision from the school committee if we can go ahead and make this offer to our teachers.
Anybody have any questions? Concerns?
Ms. Chair, I don't have a question or concern, but I just wanted to make a comment.
Hello?
I'm really happy to see that we're offering this as a possibility because I think it gives some support and some options to teachers who fit the eligibility requirements, but may be uncomfortable about returning for whatever the reason is. And I certainly could relate to this because I fall into the vulnerable category myself because of my age. And I can understand people's concern about the unknown. So I'm really glad that we are making this offer. So thank you for those of you who pursued this.
Any other questions, comments? I want to entertain a motion, motion to approve the retirement changes as presented in your package.
So moved.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Madam Clark, I'm going to ask you to roll call this.
Chair Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Shearres?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Johannes?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo?
Yes.
And Mrs. Bada?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, and obviously this is subject to, we don't know what the union did today, but if the union does not support this, then it would be a moot issue. Next item on the agenda is the MOA, NSTA, the Live Instruction Agreement. Superintendent?
So this is part of a statewide and national conversation. We are going to be in a situation in which we're going to have to pivot in and out of the classroom in distance learning rapidly. Now, one of the easiest, most direct way to do this is to stream lessons directly from the classroom into the home. So a student who is on distance learning, a student who is home due to quarantine, what this means is that that student joined the classroom from home via Google Meet, just like we did with distance learning, except now we can have a group of in-person students working with and the teacher instructing an at-home student. However, there are real changes in working conditions. There are also security issues. There are a lot of, it's not just the technical feasibility of this. There are other moving parts to streaming from a classroom. And so what this document is, is assurances to our teachers that if we, if and when we do streaming from the classroom, it's done in a very controlled fashion. It's done safely and securely. It's done with some support mechanisms in place to the point where everybody is comfortable doing this. I am very pleased our teachers so easily, you know, agreed to this because it is a way to manage this hybrid between in-person and remote learning and keep everybody connected. Now, it will vary according to grade level. It will vary according to content area. It's not necessarily a one-size-fits-all. We're not turning on a camera in a classroom and going to be broadcasting it out to the internet like some reality show. That's what this document sets into place. It just sort of defines what live instruction will and will not look like. And personally, I'm very comfortable with this document. In fact, I'm looking to add a couple more supports and safeties for our teachers beyond what was in the original document as we went through it last week. So I would strongly encourage approving this MOA because it really is going to help our students, our families, and it truly does set North Smithfield apart from a lot of other districts that may be struggling with embracing the technology to do instruction into the classroom, into the home.
Thank you, Superintendent. And just two quick points. The solicitor, school solicitor has reviewed this and approved it or made changes or?
He has. He actually added two items at the very bottom of the document that nominally I went over with the union president. It was understandable, didn't seem to be an issue. And again, the executive board is taking a look at these changes. Nothing of substance has changed. There was actually just one or two items in there that was actually more of a protection for the district rather than the teacher.
And Superintendent, I did ask Lisa for a financial note on this and there is no financial in?
None. There is no negative impact financially. No, Mr. Lombardi, I think you froze. Nope, Mr. Lombardi, I think you froze.
Impact.
There we go.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, you're freezing up, but no, there there is no negative impact financially.
Mr. Lombardi said that this might.
Great, can you hear me? Lucia?
You're back.
You're back.
Okay, all right.
I I don't want to internet internet shame you, but you might want to upgrade your service.
I just did.
Okay, well, take it back.
Well, upgraded again.
I know. I went to 300, whatever the, you would know better than I am, but I went from 150 to 300. That's the highest that you can get in from my modem and all that stuff. But anyway, okay, no questions. Let me just make a statement, I do want to thank the union leadership and the cooperation of the teachers to work with the district during this very difficult time. You know, this, this is cooperation. That is. An excellent thing, I mean, I I don't even know how to say it better, but I just want to thank them. It's it's a it's a great result, and it helps the district tremendously. And thank you, Superintendent, for leading the charge on this.
Yeah, I'd like to echo the chair. You know, I've been watching a lot of the national conversations, and this is the national conversation. And I applaud the entire staff administration for getting this done and knowing what's right on behalf of kids. I can't thank you enough.
I agree with you.
I think it's a great idea, I think it's a great program, I agree, I support it, I'm so glad. When I've been in conversations at the state on this before, the only concern I ever, my biggest concern remains, I'm still going to vote for this, I think it's a good idea. Is that we're careful that we don't, none of the filming, we don't identify students, especially students with special needs. Which is always a risk with those cameras. I'm going to support it, I think we should go, I don't think that risk should stop us from doing it. I just want to point out that that's, that's my concern, that's my biggest, that's my biggest concern. But again, I'm still supporting this and all on board with this. And I did not look at Ben's changes, the recent changes.
Thank you. So then I'll entertain a motion to improve, to approve the MOA NSTA Live Instruction Agreement as presented.
So moved.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconding. Please roll call on this. Madam Clark?
Chair Lombardi?
Yes.
Mrs. Shearres?
Yes.
Mr. Canal?
Yes.
Mrs. Johannes?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayo?
Yes.
Mrs. Bottom?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you. Next item on the agenda is the teacher recalls, Superintendent?
I am providing for you the remaining folk. We're going to be whole with the exception of two who have taken other positions. So this, this wraps up the all the folks that received their notices at the end of last year. And I want to apologize and thank them for their patience as we try very hard to wait on the state and the federal government for the budgets. However, we cannot have you wait anymore, we cannot wait anymore, we have to draw a line in the sand and move forward. And, you know, if 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 something happens down the road as far as funding, we will, we we are going to have to find other other means to make up. Make this up, but we cannot do this on the the backs of our teachers. So I'm very happy to just just draw this line in the sand and just recommend, look, we we got to bring our folks back.
Great. Thank you, does anybody have any questions?
May I just make a quick comment, Mr. Chair, piggybacking on the superintendent? You froze again, Jim. Was that a yes?
That was a yes.
Okay. It always freezes on your stern face, so I. No, I I just wanted to echo what the superintendent was saying and say thank you to the teachers who have stuck with us and been so patient as we've been trying to navigate everything that's been going on. It really says a lot about the individual teachers and the district that, you know, they were willing to stick with us, wait it out, and they're willing to come back and be part of this team, even though there was such uncertainty there. You know, it just, it means a lot to me, it means a lot to the district, and, you know. It's always the worst thing when we have to issue the recalls, I mean, issue the the layoffs. But to issue the recalls is just, it's, it's great. So thank you, Superintendent, and thank you, everyone who stuck it out with us.
Thank you. My on?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Did we make that motion on the teacher recalls?
Make that motion.
All right, and is there a second?
Second.
Seconding. And the motion is to approve the teacher recalls as presented by the superintendent. I think all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it, is there any further business before? School committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconding, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you for everyone who attended.
Aye.